Started. A copy of the open meetings law is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There's also an automatic external defibrillator in the back, on the wall in the back of the chamber here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia is right here. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, March 14, 2023. And item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, March 28, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. We have resolutions D through each. There is no need for executive session, so the motion can include adjournment if the Board so chooses.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 14, 2023. And item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through March 21, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through G. Please note on A, they left out the word health. It's the Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services. And with that, no other changes. Is there a motion to approve the consent?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Recognition and proclamations, we have one. Recognition of Evelyn Mosley, who's worked for the Douglas County Health Center for 25 years. She is not with us today, but we do wish her a happy retirement and thank her for her service to Douglas County and to the citizens of Douglas County. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Morning.
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. This morning, I'd like to comment about our elections. A little research on the web and everything, I've noticed an awful lot of states and awful lot of boards are rushing to pass new laws, new ordinances, new resolutions about the elections to fix the elections, but they deny that there were any problems with the elections back at the last general election. And that people like me that think there were, and have plenty of evidence that there was, are the deniers. It's quite the opposite, and this is what's wrong with our country today. Our elected people are reversing what we, the people, set up for them in the Constitution. There was a candidate for write-in office as governor. My vote wasn't counted for him because the Secretary of State decided, before the counting, I guess, that there was less than 5% of the vote, so it didn't need to be counted. That's an abuse of power. Robert Borr is the only person in this country, particularly right here in the middle of the country, Omaha, River City, that stands up to speak about the inadequacies and probable election fraud. So I'd like to submit something that he wrote and post it online about our power is in sentiment, not in begging. The gist of that is that we citizens seem to have to go to these boards, public meetings, and beg for things. But most of them sit there and just stare at us, don't say anything back and forth because the lawyers tell them they can't talk to us. That's sort of unconstitutional, too. And that's why people need to stop re-electing the same people over and over again because you all go along with that. You go down to the State House and lobby against us for election bills such as countywide mail-in voting. Kenny-wide mail-in voting will disenfranchise all the rural voters. But it's also very susceptible to fraud. If I wanted to mess with the elections, I'd probably look at mail-in voting first. It doesn't say anything about security for mail-in votes. It implies using the postal system. Well, postal system isn't infallible. But we're voting on these things without a serious discussion. And the bill I read on that, there was a lady there from the National Association of Counties, which has more power at these bodies than I do or any other citizen, voting against us. Bob Evans, Secretary of State, largely responsible for problems with our last election in Nebraska, was eventually, was originally for it, now he's against it. But he doesn't really explain why. Bob Borr has some information about that. But elected officials need to start listening to the people again instead of national associations, of federal, county, municipality, governors, and everything. Because those people didn't elect him. We did. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. 2709 Dewey Avenue. I have a proposal I'd like to present to you guys. I live here and I'm interested in
Can you state your
Luis Jimenez?
Thank you.
Okay. Can you, Dan, can you pass those out? I'll send you a digital copy. Can you pass all of them? I'm interested in multimodal transportation. And this proposal is looking for funds to install a bike station at the Soren, the Abrams branch over over at 5111 North 90th Street. And I think that this is an opportunity for you guys to have a better urban posturing. I think you're interested in becoming more urban in your services. You do criminality and mental health. And service the indignant, indigent. But I think transportation is important that you can do. This e-bike system reaches all the way to Bellevue and Papillion. And I think more areas of the county can be serviced. So the overview, Heartland Bike Share is going to be, to go all electric, electric bikes and retiring their analog bikes. DoSpace is temporarily moving to Abrams Library for about two or three years as the new central library is built at 72nd and Dodge, where DoSpace will return permanently. At the same time, the city of Omaha and the NRD can provide studies and plans that fit into Omaha Public Library hopes of having multimodal connectivity to their branch locations as well as increasing participation to the library's membership program with Heartland Bike Share. This proposal brings e-bikes near the Abrams Branch and the Keystone Trail at Democracy Park while supporting businesses in the area at 90th and Fort Streets. So I think that if this goes through and gets funded, the station would be at Democracy Park. So what I propose that your participation to this be is on the cost share, on the cost share. Everybody's gonna get a copy. E-bike station costs is $60,000. So that's really what I'm looking for. But the NRD has a cost share program. So they could pay 30, 30,000, and then I have to come up with the rest. So I see as asking for low and high amounts through individual contributions, foundations, and government funding. I think government A is where you fit in. You could provide 5,000 or 10,000. You provide 5,000, we can get to the
One minute.
60,000. If you provide more, we can maybe get up to 100,000 for this project at the, near Abrams Library. The uses would be basic is 62,850 for the e-bike station and then two bike racks to make it more of a unified project. Which would be, each bike rack would have three U-shaped racks. And then further, the full scale, 97,850 would provide for green components, for the Green Streets Plan, and then other improvements. People who walk and ride bikes should have shades and pathways to, you know, to move. So I hope you look into this and reach out to the stakeholders.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we do have one presentation today, and it's the Douglas County Health Center Foundation presentation by Molly O'Neil, the Foundation Board Chair. But with us and with Molly is our Erin Nelson, the Executive Director, but also Gail and former Commissioner Claire Duda. And so thank you for being with us this morning. It's good to see both of you. And with that, I'll turn it over to Molly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we, I am the President of the Douglas County Health Center Foundation. I was an employee there for eight years and have come back now to serve on the Board. Serves a very special place in my heart, and so one of the things we want to do is kind of do a little revamp, bring some awareness, really put this in front of the stage of the community and all the Commissioners to kind of let you guys know what our mission is, what we're looking to do, and some of our key initiatives. So our mission as a foundation is to provide in-kind funds and services to enhance the quality of life for the Douglas County Health Center long-term care residents and to support the employees and their educational opportunities. Our history, the Health Center Foundation was started in 1994 through a generous donation from Thomas McGruder in memory, excuse me, Ann McGruder, John Albert, and Nettie Bloom. The donation established a nursing scholarship opportunities for employees of the Douglas County Health Center. And we also receive memorial donations, donations in honor of residents that are currently living in the Health Center and donations from community members. So as it stands today, we have a few people up here on our foundation. But our Board is filled with employees of the Health Center, community members, and then those involved in in the foundation. So I'd like to ask Gail, who's been with us for a while, to come up and speak about the timeline.
I missed a call from you right after.
For those on Zoom, please mute.
Yeah.
Thanks, Karen.
In our founding in 1994, Claire and I were two of the charter members. Mary Powell, who was the long-term nursing manager at the Health Center, continues to be with our Board. So we have three people with a lot of institutional memory for the Health Center. And it's been really amazing to see how in 1994, we talked about the long-term care residents as the Health Center being their home. And at that time, it was just a germ of an idea. Today, it's a real thing. Everything that we have tried to help with was to move people to feeling more like this Douglas County Health Center was their home. One of the first things that we did was the chapel, still used today, of course. We've added solariums. We have done the miracle gardens. We have EC aquariums on the floors for people to feel like they can kind of be outside. The big spaces of the solarium. Every day, we provide to Omaha World Herald, to every neighborhood, to the 14 neighborhoods. So we try to keep the people involved with the world, and that's one of the things that we do with that. We have seen so many wonderful things happen at the Douglas County Health Center with the help of the foundation to do what government just really cannot expand to do. And we do thank you for the support that you've given for us throughout that time. And we encourage you to come and visit when it's open. And you can wear a mask and come in and see some of the things that really help the people feel part of the world. We have a really cool thing called the Magic Table, which allows the residents to do all kinds of fun games and activities. And it's all done through an overhead projector. So it takes no time from the staff to do jigsaw puzzles. There is nothing to clean up but a table to wipe down. And that's the kind of things that we bring to the residents so that they continue to live full lives here as citizens of Douglas County. And we have more things planned and coming. And I am so excited to see that our foundation is being headed up by younger people. It is a real thrill for, for me. And I want to say that when we started almost 30 years ago, we thought things like young people weren't going to be interested in this because it's about old people. Well, of course, we learned really quickly that the long-term health facility that we have is not about just old people. Unfortunately, it's about people from all ages. And as you know, the age at the Health Center is getting much younger. And so it's really exciting to see young people involved in it. But then, of course, these young people are involved in the profession. So it's great, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Gail.
All right, so our 2023 goals, I'm gonna go ahead and just hit on a few things that we are looking to accomplish here in 2023 as a foundation. One is our Memorial Healing Garden, and Erin will be talking about that in just a moment. But in addition to that, we like to provide staff scholarships. So we like to provide a $1,000 opportunity for employees to apply and be reimbursed for their tuition. So we're encouraging them to advance their career at the Health Center. And then community relationships. So one of our goals is to really start connecting with those in the community and expanding and showing what we're doing and being part of our fundraising opportunities. As you guys all know, we had to close a lot of things down for the last three years. So we're really looking to kind of expand, open our doors, and get some people in the building. And then resident requests. So we're always open to listening to what our social workers and our residents bring to the foundation as to what they're requesting. And again, these are just extra things outside of what the community dollars provide for them. So to kind of hit on our largest mission, I'm gonna have Erin talk specifically about our initiative of the Memorial Garden.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So the Memorial Garden is going to go in our Kavanaugh Care Center courtyard.
Sorry, Erin, can you state your last name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Erin Nelson, Douglas County Administrator. So we had a beautiful fountain, as you can see in the picture there. The winter weathers of Nebraska were not good to it, so we had to remove it this past year. So we thought of, it's a beautiful area, it's one of the favorite areas where the residents love to go and spend time. And so we have a blank area, and so we thought it'd be a great place to make it kind of a focal point. So we're going to add bricks. We're gonna add 500 bricks out there for people that have passed away, either residents, coworkers, previous coworkers that have passed, and create a memorial space that people can go out and visit. In addition to that, as we raise money through selling the bricks, we're going to buy, purchase these handmade sculptures from a local artist. And they're gonna be butterflies, it's kind of a, a new life. And they're just beautiful, and they'll be lit up at night. So looking forward to that. And I just want to give a special thank you to the foundation because they often provide things that we can't. They were able to provide like the movie screen in the town hall area so we can have movies, or the ice cream machine. The little things in life that we may not budget for, the foundation is able to provide. We have blanket warmers, just the little niceties that they provide for the residents. So looking forward to this project. It should be beautiful and just a focal point. Thank you.
Great. So kind of with that fundraise that we're trying to accomplish this year, what we're asking of the Board is again, just any opportunities that we have as a foundation to kind of share what we're doing, what we're looking to raise and what we're looking to raise for. We would love those introductions and connections. And then we're also looking for three additional board members. And so if you guys have anyone in your network that you feel would fit on our county board and with our, excuse me, with our foundation and with our mission, we are definitely open to recruiting and trying to get more members, maybe more young blood on the foundation as well. And then again, just a thank you for your continued support of the Health Center and all that you guys do for us. So kind of with that, I'll conclude. I've left our contact information, so if you know anyone or want to get in touch with us so that we can make those connections and introductions, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly, and Erin, and Gail, and Claire, that's a great presentation. We do have a light. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you for this. And I really want to commend you for stepping up. This is an important function. Douglas County Health Center is probably the best thing that Douglas County does, and so having the foundation is really instrumental in helping us provide the best services we can for the residents there. Just for the record, because you're on the record, and I did look up this, it's kind of impressive. When you worked at Douglas County Health Center, what was your job?
I was the Program Director at Douglas County Health Center. So I worked alongside Erin, and I got to really help start all of the new initiatives and new, you know, innovative programs that the Health Center has to offer, and then really focused on the therapy service as well.
And then when you transferred to the private sector, why don't you tell us a little bit about what you did there and what you're doing now?
Yeah, I started my own company. It's called Superb Shifts. And it's all because of my time at the Health Center and some of the deficits I saw. And so it's an app where healthcare, senior care facilities can post their open shifts. Healthcare workers can go on and work them as well for just a service fee. So we're able to cut out agency companies and save monies for senior care facilities.
And we had a trustees meeting yesterday at the Health Center, and we talked a little bit about this because like a lot of healthcare providers in our country, we have staffing issues. These agencies help us address those staffing issues. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Particularly kind of the nursing, the direct healthcare providers, which is, you know, a significant shortage of nationwide. You help us bridge that gap. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I consider like the Uber of healthcare staffing. So trying to keep, trying to find ways, you know, to bring people into this profession, get them into senior care facilities, and to help support places like the Health Center.
Well, again, I want to commend you and our DoDOS friends and everybody on the Board for the great work that you do helping us with Douglas County Health Center and benefiting the residents in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Very kind.
I see no other lights, but I do want to comment on something that Gail talked about on the slide where it said what the foundation had, some of the projects that they had done. Those magic tables. Honest to gosh, those are the coolest things ever. I mean, even for people who are visitors, you know, you get like, they're doing it, and then the next thing you know, you're doing it with. I mean, it is just like so, they are so cool.
Thank you.
Those are, and the blanket warmers are cool, too. But those magic tables, those are cool. So good job. Any other questions or comments? Again, thank you so much for the work that you do for the Health Center. Molly, again, I know you've been around for a long time, even though you are so young. Gail and Claire, you guys have always been the champions of the champions for the Health Center. You know, Commissioner Duda, from the time you started to the time you ended, you fought. And the Health Center was your number one. I mean, that's, you, you did. I mean, that's, you did, and Gail got involved with the foundation. And so we appreciate all the work that you've done over the years for the foundation, but also because it does such benefits to our health center. So thank you very much. So with that, thank you, and can you send us your slides? Okay, okay, great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh huh. Yeah, that's okay, Larry. Yeah.
Before you leave, folks, thank you for all you do, do. I wish they'd have stayed, but I'm not against all foundations, but there are some foundations that don't necessarily work for our good. Now, I didn't see or hear anything in here about Douglas County budget items going to this foundation, but most foundations around Omaha do come to this body for funds. And I see it's also in the budget discussion later about inheritance tax funds. Maybe there's a lot of things that don't need to be done there with taxpayer dollars or funding. If they're able to raise all the money they need, that's fine and dandy, but to keep raising people like my property taxes, they're getting pretty old and hard to live anymore, maybe some of these things ought to be denied. Maybe some of the nice things that are being done need to be cut back on. But not all of them are bad, this is not one of the bad ones. I'm just saying, they must get some funding here, or they wouldn't be here making a presentation, probably. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, we do have a public hearing. The public hearing is to provide additional dollars for salary adjustment account for approved wage increases, increased budgets for the inheritance tax fund, tourism fund, district court, and environmental services. This provides additional budget dollars for budget increases with revenue offsets for the corrections bond fund, drug law enforcement and education fund, the youth center, health center sheriff, and environmental services. This is in the amount of $12,970,475. And Joe, our chief financial officer, for a little while longer, is at the podium.
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Lorenz, county finance director. So I'm going to take you through the budget supplement. As you are aware, we only do supplements twice a year because whenever we do a budget supplement, that increases the overall budget. It has, under statute, be done as a public hearing. So we really don't, we try to keep this for a minimum. So we do the salary adjustments now, and then we usually do a smaller one in May just to make sure all the county departments can get through the end of the fiscal year. So with that, the first element I want to talk to in the budget supplement are the salary adjustments. When we put last year's budget together, we budgeted $2,250,000 for salary adjustments. And this chart on the screen and in front of you kind of breaks out and shows you that we are exceeding that amount by a considerable amount. You can see as you go down, it's really coming out of the general fund, where there's close to $4.9 million in incremental salary adjustments. And that is really driven by two contracts that were settled that came in higher than the original anticipations. That was the corrections officer settlement, which is creating an additional $2.5 million in salary expense for these last six months of our fiscal year, and $1 million for the sheriff's department, where they got a new contract, which is adding $1 million of incremental salary expense. So those two are $3.5 million. So that's going to require an additional appropriation of $3 million to the salary adjustment fund from the general fund. So I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Just go through it all and then the last question.
Okay. After the salary adjustments, we go through, you know, one-time departmental adjustments. So what we're asking for on the inheritance tax fund is the authority to increase that budget by $6 million to reimburse the fund budget for a $6 million cash transfer we made in November of last year to the employee medical insurance fund to cover high-cost medical claims. This fiscal year, we've had a record amount of high-cost medical claims, and you can't point to one thing. I mean, there's been preemies, there's been people with serious cancer cases. And so that was, because we're self-insured, that was eating away at our reserve. So what we did, we were kind of really getting in kind of a cash crunch to pay it out. So last November, we just said, okay, let's take $6 million from the inheritance tax fund, which was really budgeted for other things, and give it to employee medical insurance to cover these claims. And I guess the good thing is that we are having a record year in inheritance tax proceeds. That to, the original budget for the year was $13 million. To date, we have received approximately $19 million in inheritance tax proceeds. So we were, you know, this, and that just shows you the importance of inheritance tax to the county. That really is our rainy day fund, or where we go to in an event of unexpected emergency for funding, which we did here, in taking this $6 million and putting it in medical insurance. So what we're just asking now is to increase the inheritance tax budget by that $6 million so it can go, that money can go to the other areas that were originally budgeted to receive inheritance tax funds. Second is the tourism fund. When we put the $4 million budget together, then we gave it out to the visitor improvement fund. We really didn't, or we overlooked that we needed to put $150,000 in there to fund the Douglas County Fair. So that, this is what that is, it's just increasing that budget by $150,000, and there is adequate funding within the tourism fund to cover that $150,000. Next would be $100,000 for district court, and that's driven by an increase in court-appointed attorneys' fees. So we'll increase their budget by $100,000. And then the last unfunded item is environmental services. And they're doing work out at the state street landfill for post-closure permits and some things that are going to, incurring about an additional $50,000 in fees for that. So you can see the total unfunded amount is $6.3 million, the majority of which is inheritance tax fund and is coming from the inheritance tax fund, so. Next are funded departmental budget adjustments. And, you know, under fund accounting, if you increase the expense budget, sometimes when it's funded, you're also going to have offsetting revenues. So these are expenses that even though they're increasing the budget, there are sources of funding for them. So the first one is environmental services, which is increasing their expense budget by $1 million due to a significant increase in the Pheasant Point landfill tonnage. And of course, that's offset by incremental revenues. And we actually do make a margin on the landfill, so if expenses go up by a million, probably revenue is going to go up by a million one. So that's funded. The second one is the corrections bond fund. We actually paid off the corrections bonds, but there's a little over $700,000 sitting in the corrections bond fund that we want to take that money and transfer it to the public safety bond fund. But when we put the budget together, because the corrections bond fund wasn't, was paid off, we didn't put any money in there for, to transfer it. So this is just an accounting thing that will allow us to transfer a little over $700,000 from the corrections bond fund, which there are no more corrections bonds, and use that money to fund the public safety bond payments in the future. So that's funded. Youth center is asking for a supplement of $737,000 that, to cover the costs that are being incurred to, due to a significantly higher average daily population than we had anticipated. And, you know, I think most of us are aware of that as it relates to opening the new youth center, that the population is higher than was planned. And so this reflects those costs. But these costs are offset in that the, a lot of the funding we receive, we receive from both the state and the federal government is based on a per capita, per diem basis. So we are receiving money that will cover this $737,000 in terms of increased revenue from these other funding sources for the youth center. And that's showing up year-to-date, we actually have about a million dollar positive variance in youth center revenue. Next is the health center, about a $552,000 increase. And this is due to the state of Nebraska ARPA award, which the health center management has chose to give out in the form of premium pay. So they received the award, and so we're starting to pay it out over the remainder of the fiscal year. And this is just increasing their expense budget to cover the receeded cash that we already have for their premium pay. Next is the drug law enforcement and education fund, and this has gone up significantly because we're starting to see the receipts from the opioid settlements. We've received, to date, over $400,000 in opioid receipts. Commissioner Borgensen's working with Region Six on putting how those plans can, how that money can be spent according to the restrictions and guidelines issued under the terms of the opioid settlement. So that, we're going to increase that budget to make those expenditures, but again, that is cash that has been received already. And finally, the last funded one is the sheriff has received incremental grant fund expenditures of a little over $61,000, which they'll spend for the stated grants, and we will increase their budget by that amount of funded grant money. So those are the funded. So the last chart I'll just show you is net-net the impact on the general fund, which is, you know, the big thing is the salary adjustment fund, taking the $3 million from the, from the general fund to fund the salaries. But otherwise, other than that, it's basically just $100,000 for district court and $50,000 for environmental services. So for a total of $3,150,000. But, and I think this is a good thing because it essentially shows that the departments are really working within their budgets, and we don't, you know, people aren't exceeding their budgets, and it, so it was a good operating plan that we put into place, and they've been able to follow. And with that, I will turn it over to you for questions.
All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thanks for this. Just to get some public record on some of these transfers, this happens every year.
Yes.
The difference this year is we've had a couple of, I guess, new, if not unexpected expenditures, so it's larger than it usually is.
Yeah, we've never had this on the medical expense before. The salary adjustments occasionally does go over.
Right. So the $3 million, which is the biggest salary adjustment, went specifically to sheriff's department and the corrections department to help supplement pay for sheriff's deputies and correction officers.
Yes.
And that was part of an attempt to help us with staffing problems that we've had there, people leaving for higher pay at other places.
Yeah, it was driven by market conditions in the labor market for those positions, yeah.
The youth center item reflects a higher average daily population. Actually, I think the average daily population is fairly stable at 80, 80-plus. The problem is that the new kids jail has a capacity of 64, and so you're not going to be able to fit the population of the youth center into the new kids jail. But this particular item, increased budget because of significant higher average daily population, what does that go to pay for? Do you know?
It just goes, you know, their meals, their activities, the teaching. I mean, I think, I don't know if Kim knows the details, but I think we were budgeting closer to like 60 people, and we've been running more at 80, which is a 33% increase. And so those are the cost of, you know, just feeding and educating and working with the 33% increase in kids within the facility.
Sure. And that might have been higher than some people forecasted. I can remember going back years that it was pointed out that that was going to happen. So this is not an unanticipated occurrence, it's just what we anticipated and spoke about at length. The tourism fund, an increase of $150,000 there for the county fair, and I don't know if you know, if somebody would know what we're spending an extra $150,000 on the county fair for.
It's not an, we, that actually is our fault. When we put the $4 million in for the tourism, we forgot to put in $150,000 for, that's us treated separately. That doesn't come out of the visitor improvement fund, that's a separate thing. So it's not really an incremental 150, it's just something that was not in the original tourism budget, but should have been.
And the environmental services, increased tonnage and permitting fees, was that, we're experiencing increased tonnage?
Yes.
And experiencing increased tipping fees as well?
Yes. But like I said, there's also a revenue offset, but we are running above budget, yes.
When I looked at the resolution, I was just kind of doing the rough math. Just to be clear, if you added up all the numbers in the resolution, it's like $18 million. Until you get to the last sentence, which says a reduction of $5.2 million and change is to be made from the salary adjustment fund, so that gets us to the $12,970,000
Exactly, yes.
Dollar amount that we're doing here today.
One minute.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe, thanks for the report. None of this is excruciatingly surprising, mainly because I probably bother you on the phone at least twice a week, but let me ask you this. Probably my naivete, if, if we go through a supplement cycle and we have to try to tap cash reserve, that would show up on, that would show up on page. I mean, if we did that, if we tapped into the cash reserve, we would put that in the unfunded section on page three, right?
Yeah, and really, the big amount we're doing is that last page because that's what's coming out of the general fund. And by far, the big piece of that is for salary adjustment. And so that is coming from the general fund cash reserve, which at its low point this year was, you know, a little over $20 million, so.
Okay.
So we can afford it.
Okay, okay, great. And that leads me to my final point. I don't know if I've ever asked you this, in a cash reserve at the county level for, at the Douglas County level, for our edification, zero's not an option. When dealing with our cash reserve, what's an optimal, what's an optimal, optimal amount to populate that fund? So in other words, when do you and Lori, you know, call us and go, hey? What, so in other words, when do you and Lori, you know, call us and go, hey, no, no, we can't do that? I mean, is it 5 million, is it?
Well, we...
Or does it depend?
It, you know, the, that balance is seasonal. You know, we have, we get a lot of money twice a year. Like, right now, we're going to be at our high point when the, when the March proceeds come in. So, but when we put the budget together, what we're always trying to do is have a balanced budget so that the cash receipts we bring in, primarily from property tax, but also from fees and things like that, covers the county's operating expenses. And that's the idea of a, of a balanced budget, is that you have this reserve. And if you have a balanced budget, the reserve should not have to be used to fund part of that budget. But where we are, you know, some years, we've gotten under below, below 10 million in our operating reserve. And, you know, that's, that's when it gets pretty tight, we're really managing cash. But given the environments of the, of the past three years, we've been pretty liquid in terms of that from different costs that have, where it went down because of the pandemic, and funding that went up because of the pandemic. So we've been pretty liquid and have been in a position, we've been able to cover any incremental expenses.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, you're obviously getting to a point where, in a, in a cash reserve, where a red flag goes up and it depends on the revenues in a given year.
Yes. And controlling expenses, right?
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Commissioner Friend raises a good question. And one of the things I guess we might take away from this is this, this is an annual occurrence. And it might be a good topic for a finance committee annual meeting, along with, you know, regular budget meetings the finance committee may hold. I just point that out as kind of a good public policy consideration. Thank you.
All right. With that, is there anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing on this item?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I notice budget items reimbursing the inheritance tax budget. I haven't read that, but I understand you got to hurry on this because the state legislature may do away with the inheritance tax pretty quickly, depending on filibusters. But you come after me with property taxes that go up because somebody sold their house to an out-of-stater for an ungodly amount of money. That's kind of pushing me out. You're coming after my money, and now you want my kid's money if I happen to have anything left? Is that what the inheritance tax is? If you don't get me, you're going to get them? That's kind of unfair. I think that's unconstitutional according to the founding fathers. I don't think you should reimburse the inheritance tax. You should kill that until you find out if the state legislator does away with it. And also, on the youth center, I didn't get a vote. Most, none of us got to vote, except you people. And I understand it's in the public domain right now, but there is a disagreement between Chairman Chris Rogers and the Douglas County Sheriff about the numbers going up. It even says that in the agenda item here about the increasing numbers in the Douglas County Youth Center. So the programs we've been spending a lot of money in, out of my pocket, are not working. We don't, once you're re-leasing them, without something that works. But we don't want you spending money on programs from somebody outside of this city and state and their so-called best practices that obviously haven't been working. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, our committee reports. The finance is the budget report as presented. And then human resources, the weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. And then in your packets, you do have the legislative report from our lobbyist. And just to note a few things, that we're about halfway through the session. The priority deadline was last week, and the complete list of priority bills is attached to your report. Committee hearings will conclude this week, March 24th. And they'll commence on full-day debate on the 28th. Interestingly, the speaker has already announced that there's going to be potentially 29 legislative late nights during full-floor debate, which is really since, I've never seen that happen since I've been here, that they've announced the late night so early on. But that'll be something to watch as well. So anyway, if you have any further questions about any of the legislative items, let me know. We do have a child and youth committee meeting at 1:00 PM today in room 903. And then we do not have need for an executive session today. And so I would ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at 9:56 AM.